Thank you for joining us. This is the September 12th, 2013 Town Work Session of the East Fishkill Town Board and a Special Voting Meeting. At a work session is really where the Town Board can meet all together as a body to discuss matters of importance at a town. So if you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. And when we're done with the Pledge of Allegiance, please withhold for a moment of silence for those that passed away in 9/11 yesterday. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Being so close to September 11, I just thought it was fitting that we should have a moment of silence. One thing I would like to point out, I do have a couple of announcements this evening. We had 9/11 ceremony last night out in front of the Town Hall. And it was a very nice ceremony. I'd like to thank Bonnie Weegard who organized it. She did a great job. And the Hudson Valley Boy Scouts Band, they do a terrific job and they really make us all look good. So I can't sing, but thank goodness they can play loud music. And our firemen and our police department, they really did a nice job. I'd like to thank everybody for a very nice ceremony last night. Only one other announcement, and I'd like to defer to the attorney about our lawsuit. Tom, we're being sued because of, I guess, a developer that's a little bit unhappy. Would you like to bring us up to speed a little bit on the nature of the lawsuit?
Yes, the town received the notice of claim today. As the public probably is aware, we've had several applications with respect to a parcel property in Joe's mother's way with respect to multiple family housing that would have been built under the Affordable Housing Provisions of State law. None of the projects ever were brought to fruition, that is, come before the Town Board for an actual vote. Two of them were withdrawn and one was abandoned. However, the property owner has chosen to file a notice of claim against the town claiming that our zoning ordinance unfairly discriminates against multiple family housing and therefore those who may economically need to rent apartments as opposed to perhaps purchasing a home. So this notice of claim is required under law. They have to file it within 90 days of when they feel the act or omission occurred. We think there's many issues to be addressed in it, but it's here.
No doubt. You know, when we looked at these projects, I mean, the first project probably came was about four years ago. And it was, I think it was supposedly a senior project, and it was, I forget how many years. The density was high, we discussed that, never went anywhere, then it came back as workforce housing. And then we discussed that, and I think a lot of our issues back then were, the traffic was going to be an issue, I think that the intersection onto 82 there was an F. There was issues of, questions of management of these facilities, and we had a lot of, I think, very valid issues. And looking back, and then the second gentleman kind of picked up the ball and ran without making any changes to the application. So, you know, I'd have to say, in retrospect, I really think that we took the right action and, you know, certainly stand by it, will not be cowed by an attorney sending us a letter of notice of claim, and we'll see how it goes. What's the next steps on this, Tom?
Well, actually, within 30 days, the town has the right to request to have a representative of the claim come in and be questioned to get the details of the claim, which we will do. And then after that, they have up to a year to bring a lawsuit, the actual lawsuit.
Okay. So no actual lawsuit has been filed, just a notice of claim?
No, just a notice of claim. There is no lawsuit at this time.
Okay. And I'm not sure if I could speak for everybody, but, you know, I think that the things, especially in this case, looking back, I think we made the right decision. So it is what it is. Second lawsuit, obviously, Little Switzerland Cell Tower was also denied, so I believe that's another lawsuit that's pending.
Right, as after many public hearings and expert testimony, both by a town consultant and the applicant's consultants, the application for a cell tower along the Teconic in Little Switzerland up in the hill was turned down based on technical reasons under the Federal Telecommunications Act. The applicant Homeland Towers and Verizon filed a lawsuit challenging the determination of the zoning board. Homeland Talis is actually the applicant, because what they do is try to get approvals and then they go and find cell carriers. But the issue was whether or not that tower would improve Verizon's coverage along the Teconic.
Coverage was the issue, yeah.
And based on the technical data and the experts, the zoning board felt that it would have little if any benefit other than just creating another venue for other carriers. That's pending in the federal district court. We filed the town's answer, and there's a conference with the federal judge in about two weeks to determine how he wants to proceed to making a decision.
Good. Very good. I appreciate the update on our current litigation. We're doing budgets now, so the only thing I can say is don't cut the legal budget. But again, I feel very strongly that in both these cases, we, our decision was the right decision to make, and we'll stand by that, so. All right, with that, I would just like to move on. We do have to have, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilperson Walker?
Present.
Councilperson Cassidy?
Present.
Councilperson Dankie?
Present.
Councilperson Delisandro?
Present.
Supervisor Hickman?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I did ask a clerk to be with us tonight, being a workshop. What has happened is the Community Development Block Grant applications came out a little bit late. They're due early October, and there needs to be a public hearing held on any application with a Community Development Block Grant. That being said, we had to have a, we're having a special voting meeting tonight to set the date for that public hearing. So with that, do I have a motion to open the special Town Board meeting?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. I have a resolution where as town has received an application to complete for the 2014 Community Development Block Grant, and the board is interested in applying for said grant, now therefore be resolved that the Town Board shall conduct a public hearing at its regular meeting of December, sorry, of September 26, 2013, at 7:30 PM at the Town Hall to consider the application. Be further resolved that the Town Clerk shall duly advertise set public hearing. Do I have a motion to schedule the public hearing for the CDBG? I have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. The public hearing is set for September 26, 2013. Do I have a motion to close the special Town Board meeting?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Special Town Board meeting is now closed. Does anybody have an umbrella for the Town Clerk who no longer has to remain at the meeting?
I do have one.
I have one.
I got one that's in the truck.
Yeah.
When you want to bring that in for me.
Carol, thank you very much. Victor, would you please come up and have a seat?
Sure, where's the hot seat?
There is no hot seat here, they're all friendly seats. Come on up, have a seat. Now, we're going to open the special, the Town Board Work Session, and for this session, one of the things, I do want to bring the Town Board up to date, is on our grant applications. As I said, the Community Development Block Grant application came in a little late. We have to have the public hearing, September voting meeting. I would like, I would ask that we would make the application for Julie's Jungle. I think Julie's Jungle is a very good project. I think that, you know, they would like to get moving on this. We've spoken with the county about the Community Development Block Grant process, and a little bit about Julie's Jungle, and they seem to be pretty enthusiastic about the project as a whole. So if the board is okay, what I would like to do at the, at the public hearing in a couple of weeks is request authorization to make a Community Development Block Grant application for Julie's Jungle in the amount of $100,000. So if that's okay with the board, that's how I'd like to proceed with that. All has to be bundled up and together, and I believe up to the county by probably a second week in October, so that's why this tight timeframe. So, that's going to be that. And I did want to talk a little about Superstorm Sandy funding. We have made applications for three projects under Superstorm Sandy, and Victor in a minute will tell us about the funding that came through with Superstorm Sandy. But we met with Congressman Maloney's people, we filled out letters of intent, and it's kind of strange how this money is funneled through the feds down to the state. It's pretty interesting, I guess, a little bizarre. But anyway, we have made applications. We've got some responses. One of the projects we're looking at is the Carroll Drive Bridge. Carroll Drive off of Beekman Road, it's a small, older subdivision, about 69 houses, and one bridge going in and out. It was replaced back in around, in the 70s, I believe, and then I think it's refurbished again in the mid 80s. It's been there. We've had some concerns. I know we had a nor'easter a few years ago where the bridge was actually topped over and nobody could get in and out. So we requested money from, some Superstorm Sandy money from FEMA to, you know, improve the bridge. We're concerned it's wooden pilings, and our traffic consultants are actually doing some engineering studies on the bridge itself. So that's one of the things. Sakuna Lake, I think everybody knows that Sakuna Lake is up on top of Long Hill. It's a private lake, we don't own it, but we would like to modify the spillway so if there's anything to happen, we know which way the water's going to go. And we've had some very good ideas about how to do that in an economic fashion. And the third one is the Hillside Lake Dam, which we just did a report for the DEC. We've requested money, funding for the Hillside Lake Dam and spillway project. So with that, Victor, would you like to talk a little bit about, first, the Superstorm Sandy money?
Sure.
Victor Cornelius is our grant writer, just...
My life has sort of been turned topsy-turvy in the last four months. Traditionally, we've been approaching for stormwater, wastewater, and drinking water issues, the, initially, the State Clean Water, State Revolving Fund and Drinking Water State Revolving Fund through the Environmental Facilities Corporation, which is the funding wing of the DEC. EFC gets its money from a block grant from the Federal Environmental Protection Agency on an annual basis. And what they do initially is they take those funds and they apply them to paying the interest on loans for municipalities when the projects that are brought in and listed on the state's intended use plan are given a certain range of points, given their emergency level, given a variety of issues that are addressed in the project, and also given the income level of the community that's being served. We've had some success with, on the normal state IUP process, but most primarily with the Whirly Homes Project, which I know is still in formation. We do have a third federal subsidy on the interest rate on that. We got it above the funding line. East Fishkill is tough to get above the funding line because of your income level. That actually is against you in terms of that, but that has been accomplished, and we've been pursuing that normal funding stream for other projects that have been identified to municipality. About four months ago, I received a call from Ed Brancati and Joe Dona to run Congressman Maloney's regional office in Newburgh. And they said, "We need for you to come down for a meeting right, right away, immediately." So I came down and I sat down, and they said, "Congress passed the Superstorm Sandy appropriation. This money is spent technically as far as the federal government is concerned." $65 billion, basically making New York and New Jersey independent of a lot of the fiscal and political vicissitudes of the rest of the United States. New York gets $35 billion of it. According to the enabling legislation, the Hudson Valley gets $7.4 billion of it. The enabling legislation, as in most federal appropriations, is really fairly scanty in its description. This Congress, in its conservatism, said, "All right, all right, we'll give you the money, but we're still paying for Katrina 10 years after the event. We'll give you two years to commit it, or you lose it." Technically, the scramble between now, between that point, the end of January, and the beginning of April into May, has been a scramble on both the state and federal levels to beef up the bureaucracies for oversight, so a certain percentage of that is going for administrative costs. And then, of course, the individual agencies on the state and federal level have ponied up and gotten themselves in the line to which they will be running the money through them. Congressman Maloney's office, initially because it was geared to Superstorm Sandy money, Dutchess County was not included because Dutchess County did not declare itself a disaster area. In the context of negotiating, and I'll give you the sequence of events, and it's based around the fact, there's a simple conclusion. The first thing that happened was FEMA and HUD, at Congressman Maloney's request, added Dutchess County to both pots. The portion that EFC gets through its EPA appropriation has yet to add Dutchess County to its pot, but it's getting $286 million this season for clean water and stormwater issues, which is going to take a lot of projects across the river up to Green County off of the intended use plan, and will lower the funding level for their normal cash flow from EPA. So basically, what happens there is that everything one can get on the state's funding levels for whatever portion of this the municipality is going to have to borrow should be gotten on those lists by this spring. The next piece in the equation was that, well, I sat down with Ed and Joe, and I said, "You know, a lot of these municipalities don't have their engineering done, they don't know what permitting is going to be involved." And they said, "Two rules of thumb. If you are spending 17," and this is actually a case, this is the case of the town of Cornwall, which is a client of mine, and they said, "If you want to spend 17 and a half million dollars to repair a 60-year-old plant that is 20 feet from the Hudson River and has no room for additional capacity or technological upgrades, or you're coming to us with a $52 million request to build a new wastewater facility up the hill off of the floodplain, we'd prefer to have the $52 million request because that indeed is a better, is a better investment at this point." The governor's office is running this as a jobs program. And everything that we put out to FEMA, to HUD, to EFC, gets screened through the governor's office. So that is, that is a key piece in the equation. The congressmen, because Congressman Maloney and Congressman Gibson in my district, immediately north, took the charge on generating this funding in Congress, are being given their, the opportunity to put in their priority lists, which has been my job, is to make sure that my clients run the priority list. The next piece, the next shoe that fell was that Westchester County was exempted from the Hudson Valley pool and moved into the New York City pool because they're having desperate trouble spending the amount of money in New York, Nassau, and Suffolk County that they need to spend. So that essentially removes an enormously large population center from the funds that the Hudson Valley gets. Then FEMA came out with their initial letter of intent process. The deadline was set for July 3rd because everybody in Albany is panicked to get this money committed as quickly as possible. On July 2nd, the governor's office released an announcement saying that the date for submission had been moved to August 1st, and that they were now including projects in the Mohawk Valley because they had just experienced an extreme storm event. The scuttlebutt, and the reality of the situation was they weren't getting in enough projects to meet the $500 billion that they wanted to spend through FEMA.
And just so the boards are aware, we submitted three letters of intent during that process. We had them in by the July 3rd, or 4th deadline.
Right. They were in by July 3rd. The deadline got moved to August 1st. The other piece of information is that subsequent to that, both FEMA and HUD funding expanded to include issues that were raised by public infrastructure in the course of Sandy, or Irene and Lee, because they're having trouble spending the money. And then they have stretched the appropriation further to include what they refer to as infrastructure hardening and development of new infrastructure that will withstand storm, severe weather events. So, you know, the qualifications for funding are changing every five minutes, and we're trying to keep up with them, and it's actually a rather interesting time for me.
Victor, what is the timeframe on this? I know we had the July 3rd or 5th, I forget what it was, deadline which we made for our projects.
Right.
We got them in, and then they extended it to August, whatever. What are we looking at? Is the funding, has the funding been sent down to the state?
The funding has been sent to the state. The FEMA and the initial HUD funding have been sent to the state. What we know is that FEMA is parsing through the letters of intent and is currently requesting municipalities to file formal applications if they meet FEMA's guidelines. If you don't meet FEMA's guideline, and that's a 75% grant for your project, looking for you, for the municipality and/or the state to fund 25% balance, which is, again, why for infrastructure projects, we go to the state Environmental Facilities Corporation because they can give us a subsidized loan for whatever balance.
And that'd be for the 25% portion of the project.
Exactly. These are all hybrid financing packages, but we're looking at very large grant portions. HUD, the HUD Disaster Relief Portion, the FEMA Hazard Mitigation was $500 million. The HUD Disaster Relief Portion reached the governor's office last week. We believe it's in excess of a couple of billion coming through HUD. It will be administered through the office, New York State Office of Community Renewal, which is very rapidly beefing up its staff. And it will, its guidelines are much broader than FEMA's. FEMA is going to be geared to making corrections to infrastructure that were impacted or could have been impacted in Irene, Lee, or Sandy. HUD, HUD Community Development Block Grant, this is the same office that administers the money that comes to the county for what, the thing you're applying for, for next month. This has a lot of political and discretionary input, and we know from working with the congressman on a daily basis that he is very, very interested in having as much of this money spent in his district as quickly as possible. So I've been told to bring in every project I have. So that's what I'm doing.
Victor, what do we think about as far as notification, what we get, when we would get funding? Would see something like that?
FEMA will be, FEMA will be, the latest FEMA will be is January. HUD will be within a two-month period of that.
Okay, so we're actually looking beginning next year?
Yeah.
January, springtime.
They would like to see some of these funds be applied in the next building season.
Okay.
There's an election in the fall.
Okay.
All right. Does anybody have any questions about this process? There will be more money through EFC. There will be more money, there may be direct money from EPA, and I know you've, as a community, have had good experience with that.
Yeah.
It is a question mark as to how this is all going to play out. My recommendation to you is, the comment from the congressman's office is, "Give us your best engineering estimate. If you don't have preliminary engineering done, and mark it up 30%, put it in."
Okay. We do try to be pretty accurate as far as our engineering budget, so.
Right.
But we appreciate that. All right, any questions on this? I know it's convoluted because EPA, the feds give the state the money, we think the state's just going to come down. Well, I thought it was just going to come through Congressman Maloney's office, and we find out, we get an email from Cuomo saying that actually you have to go through HUD or FEMA or what have you, so it's rather bizarre how this money is distributed.
They're still working it out. They're still working it out. The answer, the question that that process poses is how can the state effectively, what percentage of this money are they going to allow themselves for administration? Probably isn't going to be more than 5% to 8%. And how do they beef up state agencies that have been withering on the vine in the last few years?
Okay. Victor, going from that, I would like to say, I would like to also just discuss a little bit about our GIGP grant for the Stormwater Project for Hillside Lake. And would any of this funding have any impact on that, with that?
No, it's entirely separate process. GIGP money is partly funded from this EPA appropriation. You may recall President Obama required that EPA distributions have a certain percentage of their funding that grant fund what are called sustainable or green technologies. That's where that comes from. It's run through the EFC. It's a grant program within the Environmental Facilities Corporation. They also flesh it out, I believe, with some money from the Environmental Protection Fund, which is bottle bill money, you know, it's bottled deposits that aren't returned.
Now, the application originally was due in June, and I believe they kicked that back to August sometime. We made a application for the...
No, we have, the application is in.
...has been made for the Hillside Lake Stormwater Project. When would, would we expect any, anything back on that?
I would expect by December.
Okay, by December. So really, we're looking probably between the December and the February, March to see what kind of line of funding is going to come available, and if any of it's going to be available to the town.
Absolutely. We've done two things in this round of the application, a few additional things that were pointed out to us. First of all, there's more money this year than there was last. There's more funds available. A number of the projects that would normally have gone into the GIGP request are being funded through Superstorm Sandy money, so it's a little less competitive. We have engaged the community in discussion on this. And we also got DEC approval on the technology prior to this application process through Mr. Janeway's office before he moved on to the Adirondacks.
And I'd say one other thing that happened is I got a call from Stephen Gruber from Renewage last week, and actually, they're starting their Wapentures, Lake Wapenture project, which is similar to our Hillside Lake project in the stormwater aspect.
Right.
And he said they'll be starting actual construction, and he wanted to have us come up, take a look.
Actually, I think they're almost finished.
Are they really?
Yeah, it went in pretty quickly. It's pretty amazing looking.
He called me up, said, "I want to give you a tour," and I thought they were just getting off the ground.
No, 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 no. They started about a month and a half ago, but it's only a two to three month building period.
Okay, good. So also, I think that bodes well for us as far as they've done this, they've done it at Wapenture. Hopefully, the DEC and the powers that be will see, "Hey, this is something that worked there, we can, we can apply it down here."
The other piece that we've accomplished with this is we did file a listing for this project on the intended use plan for the state, which meant that the DEC's engineers reviewed the engineering that's been done to date, and they gave us a really high score on it. So that review portion is complete at this point, so I'm counting on the momentum on that to push us over the brink.
Good. And here we are, we are mid-September, so hopefully, we'll, hopefully we get some good news this time around. We've tried everything we could. I think we've taken, from our last two rounds, we've looked at our mistakes and improved on them and tried to...
Again, the last funding round was really, really severely cut.
Yeah.
And that was federal, on the federal level, so.
Okay.
Can you take Hillside Lake and apply to FEMA and for HUD also?
We've done that.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, just to be deliberate.
We've applied for FEMA, HUD. The request for proposal for HUD comes out the first week of October. And that's actually 100% grant.
Anything else for, to throw in there then?
Yeah, what's your wish list? Talk to me about your wish list. You wouldn't believe what I've got going on there.
Lake City.
We actually could do something with Lake City and something that we, what had happened was, and this brings me out to the last part of this whole thing, when we did the letters of intent to Governor Cuomo's office, the last, the last three questions from the end was, "Do you have a hazard mitigation plan?"
Yeah.
And we always had to write impending. I got an email last night that our hazard mitigation plan has been approved by FEMA, and we'll have a resolution at September meeting to recognize that.
Which means you can have construction projects.
Yes, so I think then we'll be able to put together some applications for FEMA. So I think that having the hazard mitigation plan will help us a lot.
Well, the county doesn't, yet.
No, I know.
So...
I would like to think we're a little ahead of the county.
Yeah, you are.
So, so I think we're on a good track. You know, I, we've always been disappointed by the federal money. For some reason, it never seems to find its way here, but hopefully, you know, we've done the right things, made the right steps, so we'll see how it goes.
Well, we're getting good feedback. Well, you know, we're being encouraged to continue and...
So you're confident?
Yeah, well, I have to tell you, I have, I've been doing this for 22 years. I've never seen the funding agencies in such panic and reaching out to me. They're understaffed, their community workshops for this have been very difficult. They realize that a lot of communities haven't done much preparation in terms of what's necessary to come to terms with their capital projects because everybody has always assumed that there wasn't going to be any money for them. And the curve between the initiation... to come to terms with their capital projects, because everybody has always assumed that there wasn't going to be any money for them. And the curve between the initiation of an idea and getting it to a point where you can talk about it in even a letter of intent can sometimes be three to six months. And they don't have that time with this. They've got to get the money out there. And I think we should take advantage of that.
Absolutely. And Ethel, back to your question about Lake City, as part of our FEMA, I'm sorry, Hazard Mitigation Plan, we did include requesting funding for a study of the Fishkill Lake, Fishkill Creek, as it runs through East Fishkill, to identify areas prone to flooding, if there's anything we can do to modify those so they don't flood as much, or direct them to the floodplains where they should be. So we'll see what happens with that. Lot of, lot of things happening, but we'll see how it goes.
The other clue is, that I've been told, is that you have to be ideally rejected by FEMA to be eligible for HUD. So, or, that's kind of what they want to see.
Mm-hmm.
So.
FEMA is January and HUD is November, no?
No, no, no. FEMA, we've already, we've already put in the LOIs for, the HUD LOIs will be the first week of October.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it's up, it's up to them to.
Victor, let me just ask you, that's a good point that Ethel just brought up. We won't really know if we're denied by FEMA until later in the year.
Right.
Would we apply for HUD?
You put everything in too, again.
So we'll, we'll apply for HUD funding also.
Absolutely.
And then in the event we're denied for FEMA, we still have a possibility with HUD funding?
That's my next application to write for you.
Okay.
Is HUD DR. And as I said, I know it reached the, the actual check, however they do it, reached the governor's office last week, and they're putting together the programs for the request for proposal for the first week of October.
Okay, very good. And I would just point out one other thing too, is we need things, having a good engineering staff is very handy, because when it comes up, we need, we need to put this stuff on paper, we need to show quantities and things. It's really good having an engineering staff right here, that we can just kind of go downstairs and say, we need to work on this. And it's just gone very well for us.
Well, and I think there's been a lot of good, good thought and creativity going into that.
Good deal. That's pretty much all the grants we're going for at this time. Little bit of work going on, but we'll see how it goes. We'll keep pursuing them. So then, Victor, we'll do the HUD applications, we'll basically, we'll mirror the FEMA applications. So we'll take care of that. And we will be working on our hazard mitigation and see how that goes. I did get a couple of calls back on some of our letters of intent, and we'll see how it goes. So we'll keep our fingers crossed. In the meantime, we just do what we keep on doing.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other questions for Victor?
Okay.
Victor, thank you very much for coming tonight.
You're very welcome, anytime.
Drive carefully going home. We're having one of those storms we were just discussing out there.
I came up frozen.
So, all right, well, don't get, don't get your stuff. Don't leave your stuff. That's probably our applications on that computer. Thank you, Victor.
Good night.
Good night. All right, well, we'll see where it goes. I mean, we have done a lot of work, we have done a lot of these applications, and let's see what happens. And he's, and he's absolutely correct though, too. The town of East Fish, when we apply for grants, we're looked at as being, the income levels are higher, so they don't look at us as they would say another town like Dover or something like that, or Cornwall. But one thing that we have found now, that we've been discussing with certain communities, we may be looking in the future to be doing income survey. Because an income survey would really be good to identify specific areas of the town. The Community Development Block Grant people used to do surveys, they used to have them plotted, they don't do that anymore. So we may actually have to go out and do our own income surveys, just get an idea of the, of the relative income of these areas, so. And that helps if you get, if you achieve certain levels on the income survey, they will actually just do away with the, with the interest payments, which is very helpful. And if you don't get a grant, and outside of a grant, you can get a loan, and then get a zero percent interest loan, so. Every little bit helps. All right, that's on grants, and we do have a bunch. Now, next is on zoning law changes. And for that, I will turn to our attorney. And Tom, you, you, Scott, our planner, and a lot of people on our boards, put together a bunch of zoning changes proposals, so if you want to go through it.
Right, well, back in June, the town planner, Michelle Robbins, distributed to the town board. What happens on a regular basis is the clerks of the zoning and planning boards keeps a list of when there's issues, what are the most frequent requests to the zoning board for interpretations or variances. And usually, when you have a lot of requests in the same area to your zoning board, it means that the zoning ordinance probably has to be clarified, or the legal term tweaked a little bit to make it clearer and lessen the number of requests. Also, you talk to the code enforcement part of the building department to see what issues regularly come up from the community in the form of complaints and issues like that. So with all of this, this is, I think, the second or third time in the last 18 months we've given to the board, we've already handled some changes. This would be a proposal, this is just a brief outline, and before we put too much time, energy, and effort in fleshing it out into an actual local law, the supervisor wanted to just discuss it a little bit with the town board to make sure we're not going into any area that the legislative body doesn't think we should. So just briefly, an area that comes up quite often is the use of fabric, fabric covered structures in residential districts. So we have them of various shapes, sizes, and kinds. So the thought would be to put some language in the zoning ordinance that would actually allow them in agricultural areas. Number, the second thing is, it's always, how many commercial vehicles should be allowed to be parked in a residential zone, that's at someone's home? And commercial vehicles come in many different forms, some are, the registration of the vehicle could be commercial, all the ways the vehicle could be painted in such a way, you know, to announce this is commercial.
All right, now, let me ask you about that one, Tom. So my pickup truck, little Toyota, four-cylinder, has commercial plates on it, and I park that in my residential.
You would be allowed to park one commercially registered vehicle.
What happens if I have two Toyota pickup trucks, a little four-cylinder thing?
Well, that's, that would have to weigh, yes.
I'd have to get a big, I'd get one big one. That's something we'll have to look into, so.
Okay. But a pickup can be registered as a passenger vehicle, and then it's out of the.
Okay.
The other is with respect to accessory structures, there's great confusion on this, is when is a shed a garage, and when is a garage a shed? We also have no definition of pool cabanas, which are all over the town, are they really a shed, or are they a separate structure? So the thought was to break out these structures and just make clear as to what setbacks and everything pertain to the various ones. The other would be to amend the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations to actually specifically put in specifications for bridges and culverts that may be constructed in new subdivisions or as part of new subdivisions. We're faced with several applications that want to put in various sorts of bridges and everything, and our ordinance doesn't have any definition or specifications as to what should be the, the right design. Also, another area of concern is the, how long should our cul-de-sacs be allowed to be? Because the longer the cul-de-sac, then the greater it is if there's a blockage in that cul-de-sac for a fire or emergency vehicle to get down through the cul-de-sac. Right now, it's a very difficult formula, the number, the cul-de-sacs measured by the frontage of the average lots and that, and it's a very convoluted formula. Most communities actually have regulations, and if a cul-de-sac goes beyond a certain length, they usually have the requirement that there's an acceptable emergency way to get out of one end of it, either just a easement across a lawn that connects to a road, something like that. Then some of these are housekeeping things, but you would have to make changes to the code to provide it. There would be a proposal to create different, right now, if you want to divide a piece of property into two lots or 50 lots, the application and all the requirements are the same. So what we're proposing is to define a major subdivision and a minor subdivision. So if somebody wants to divide a parcel in less than, four lots or less, it would be a minor subdivision, the requirements would be less, the application process would be less.
And this is something we, and just so that you know, these, all these, these proposals have come up really from the professionals working with the planning board, zoning board, and these come up. So we really, it's just something that they're bringing to our attention, that they see over and over. But I'm just going to say a little bit, I've often seen one of the issues would be minor modification to a site plan. I hope that that is included in here.
That is, yes.
Good. Because what I've seen, when I used to work down in the building department, you would have, like Summerlin Plaza, we built Summerlin Plaza, and then you would have a restaurant or some food activity go in there, and they'd have to put the bump out for a freezer or something like that. And that actually would create, having to go back to the planning board for.
For a full site plan.
Yeah, amendment of a site plan, where if we could just do a minor modification. And that's just one example, but there are other examples of that, where, gee, to send this applicant back to amend a full site plan, it could just be a minor modification. I think it's something we've needed for a long time.
And in some cases, it would actually, if there was going to be a change of less than, like, say, 500 square feet, and it didn't violate certain other parameters, they wouldn't even have to go to the planning board, that'd be done through the building department, which again eliminates many steps that.
Yeah, and I think that's a great thing, you want to bring a little.
Also in here is a request to establish a building department referral process, where if a person comes in and there's a big issue sometimes, you want to convert a particular existing store from a retail store to a restaurant.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? What this would be is a simple process where it would be sent to the planning board by a referral. And of course, the holy issue always is the parking. Does this change the parking that's already built?
Does it trigger parking?
And we're trying to come up with a method that would make it much quicker, more efficient. Many cases, you know, if it's retail to retail, it's a no-brainer, it doesn't even have to be referred. But it's only when there's a change in certain categories of use, that instead of having to, well, right now, there is no process. This would make a process that's very simple.
Right.
The planning board would merely discuss it, the professional staff would just look at how it was originally approved, because all site plans are approved with a certain number of parking for different uses.
Okay.
Also, another big thing would be to amend the subdivision regulations. We have many wonderful studies that the board over the years has paid and had prepared. Obviously, the comprehensive master plan is always applied, but as you indicated, the hazard mitigation plan is being approved. We have a HSONIA study, which was done some years ago, about significant habitats in the town. We have the Duchess County Greenway connections, which the town is a member of. And what we want to do is require that every application that's filed for a subdivision, that the applicant acknowledge that they, their staff has reviewed these studies, and identify if any of the particular property to be discussed is covered by any of these studies. It's the hope that we'd be able to identify quicker if it is in a hazardous area or something.
We had had a presentation by DEC and Cornell Cooperative some time ago, and you know, our feeling is that if the applicant knows upfront that these are areas that, for whatever reason, are special or something, well, let's design it so we're not impacting those areas, and let's still let the design go forward, but just knowing upfront that we'd like to keep this over here, keep that, if that means clustering here or moving something over there. So I think it'd be, in my opinion, and I'm not sure everybody's going to agree with me, if the applicant knows upfront, and I think if the professionals know upfront, you could actually make a better subdivision or a better site plan.
The other proposal is to create a provision that if an applicant comes before the board, any planning board, zoning board, and they go away from that board, and then the ball's in their court, they have work to do in the form of preparing a further environmental impact study or submitting anything else. If they leave and they don't come back for two years, then the law would say, your application's abandoned. And the reason for that is so many things change in that time period, information gets stale, et cetera. And they can come back and they can say, we're still working on it, we, you know, we're still here, and this is where we're at, and that would qualify to keep it going. But many of them just walk away, don't come back, and then they, they come back four years later, oh, here's our DEIS.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So this would set a time clock, which I think gives the community a little better idea as to what might be happening. Then there are some simple things to define in the, in the zoning ordinance, that the finished side of a wall or fence should face out. There's no requirement now that the finished side or the good side.
It's always been a rule of thumb that the good side, but we've never had anything, yeah.
Enforcement issues and neighborhood lawsuits.
I think six foot has to face out, but less than six foot doesn't.
So this would, this would clear that up.
Six foot or greater, the good side faces out.
Oh, but less than six foot doesn't have to.
This would be for sure.
But these definitions, we have several definitions here that have come up, like you said about a cabana. I wouldn't think that probably 15 years ago, cabanas in the town of East Fish were a big deal. But as more and more people move in, they have pools, they have cabanas, it kind of becomes an issue, what is a cabana, what is a shed, what is a, a structure? So, so this is basically some of the things that have come to us from our planning board, zoning board, and our professionals. So I'd like just to ask everybody, these are something I'd like us to consider, and just take a look at this, if you would, and I know, any questions you have, you want to speak with Tom, maybe make an appointment with Tom, we can sit down and discuss any concerns or any issues you have with these.
I just have a question or a comment on the section about, you mentioned about a business becoming a restaurant or, okay. I think that there should be a certain area within the town that, in my opinion, and I'm sure a lot of other people agree, along Route 82, that has deteriorated to what I think is a very sad condition. And it's an area in which there is a lot of retail space, and I don't know how you can arrange this, but if someone is to come in and rent this space and/or from current use to a different use, that it triggers, that the landlord has to do something with the property. I don't know how to go about it, but I think it is very, very needed in one specific area.
Okay, you're not talking about property maintenance, you're talking about generally going in and having the landlord spruce up the facility.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I think it's, we just kind of hope that people are going to do it, but I think, you know, it's beyond, it's beyond that now. How do you do that?
Well, we'll look into that.
How do you do that?
There are many triggers.
We always ask you to.
The other thing, well, along those lines, what we were talking about, now that the, like, the Hamlet area has sewer, and one proposal that's been kicking around, hasn't really made it to the board yet, would be to create an incentive for property owners in the Hamlet. And the incentive would consist of allowing them on the second floor to have small residential units.
Okay.
So it would be to create maybe, if they came in, redid their facade, and assuming all the building can handle it.
Right.
They could get several units upstairs, it would help create smaller apartments in the town. It's on central sewer and water, so those issues wouldn't be there. And in most cases, so that was a thought of incentivizing everybody.
We've been talking about that for a while. And with the sewer, what you can do is you could abandon your septic, so it gives you more parking, say, parking in the back then. So we would like to see something happen, and I know we've discussed it, Nick and I have discussed it in the past, about bringing it to the business people in the Hamlet and seeing what they think about it, seeing if the availability of very low-cost loans from the state for facade renovation, so.
And if I could just mention two other things.
Two more, absolutely.
One, you'll note here that the planner came up with this, to create a transitional industrial zone. Right now, if you look at the zoning map at the town, we have all these pockets of area that are zoned industrial from when the map was created. And the surrounding area has really developed into a very residential community. So we have these parcels of property along the major thoroughfares that theoretically could be developed in a very heavy industrial manner, which probably are no longer suitable. So we have to take a look at that. But we also have some of these areas that have been developed that are in the industrial zone, and their uses have changed. And the ones that are noted here, like Sprout Brook Court, Donovan Drive, and Nancy Court. Those are zoned industrial, but they're really being used more as retail and storage, et cetera. So the proposal would be is to create a transitional industrial zone, a TIZ zone, which would take some of these industrial districts, recognize some of the uses that are already there, and they've gotten there through use variances from the zoning board, things like that, kind of rezone it that way, still, makes all their uses perfectly illegal, it lessens it, and it protects the surrounding neighborhood from getting, you know, a real industrial contractor's yard or something where it no longer seems appropriate.
Right next door, yeah.
And then the other is to provide, when DEC reviews the subdivisions, et cetera, it's getting very complicated these days, particularly with stormwater, that when a developer comes in to develop, there's a lot of things that they're going to do in their subdivision that are going to have to be maintained in the future, that are, have to have special are going to have to be maintained in the future, that have to have special studies done or monitoring done. And so we're asking to amend the zoning ordinance that would require the planning board to refer those things back to the town board, so that the town board can make the decision if this is something that you feel should be taken on by the town into the future. Particularly, I'll give you an example, we had one project, it's a very complicated turtle protection area, where there has to be a nesting area, fencing, and monitoring. And obviously, this is going to entail, you know, someone paying attention that it's there and to take a look at it. So things like that, that are very complicated and unusual, perhaps should be reviewed by the town board before the planning board just accepts what DEC says should be part of the project.
Okay. Who wants to watch the turtles?
Well, that's just one example.
Peter?
Move as fast as you can.
I know, well, okay.
The stormwater ones are probably...
Absolutely. And we were talking a little bit about industrial before, about industrial uses. I know we want to see about changes to industrial zones.
Right.
So we have a few things that we have to talk about. One thing I do have to bring up before I forget was, we passed a law on Echo cottages a few months ago. We've had two, we've had one application, we're going to have another application for an Echo cottage in the building department. The one I know just went through the zoning board of appeals, but this other application has looked, and what I find out, which we didn't realize when we passed the law, Echo is a generic term. It is not like a brand name. And these Echo cottages have actually been constructed, like, since the late '70s, early '80s. Now, we talk about Echo cottages. I met a gentleman who wants to put an Echo cottage, not from the fellow that's building them around here, there's another manufacturer across the river that's building them. So I spoke with the manufacturer, and they said, "In our code, we require an ANSI rating, an ANSI certifications plate on the structure." And we talked about, and he said, "No, really, you should also consider accepting a HUD certification. It's the same sort of certification, it gives you the same R values. These things are built in a factory and inspected, stamped at the factory, so we don't have to do inspection of the facility or its structure when it comes out. It's already been certified when it leaves the factory." But he did say that, in addition to ANSI, to consider the HUD, the federal HUD certification. So that's something I would like to see us change, because not knowing that HUD also certifies them, I think that would be, it would kind of open it up a little bit more. So, and we'll have that also on this list in the October meeting.
Tom, what's a fabric-covered, prohibited fabric cover?
Well, the fabric cover is usually like a aluminum structure, and then there's fabric over it.
And there are cars in it?
Yeah, it looks like...
A lot of cars are under those covers?
Do you want to prohibit them, or do you just want to move them to the back?
Well, it's not necessarily prohibitive, I agree. It would be just that they couldn't be in the front yard, perhaps they have to be in the backyard, things like that. And there's no, and the regulation, the problem that the complaints are, people are putting very close to the one's lot line, and then the neighbor has, you know...
Neighbors get still gas.
The impact, so it's not necessarily prohibitive, it's a matter of setting some requirements.
Some of these things, structures, you call those little carport structures, is that what it is?
Well, it's carport, you see, that's the problem we have. A carport is defined differently, it's structured with a roof. Now you have the fabric-covered structures, which are different, so...
Depends on which website you buy it on?
Right. So these are the things that cause the problems, because, you know, what is it? Is it a carport? Is it a fabric structure? So that's what we're looking to give you some choices to decide.
And I think you're coming into a problem. For some people, you don't want it in the front yard, and you say maybe the backyard, but it depends, you know, a neighbor whose backyard faces their backyard, you know? I don't think I would want to look at that. So I think you have to...
That's what the board will have to decide. We'll give you some choices and options, but that's... And then the other thing, too, that's on the list, is right now, a nursery school, for-profit, commercial nursery school can be established in any residential neighborhood, so that technically, any home, any of our neighbors' homes can be converted into a commercial nursery. I'm not talking about a mother or father who keep five or six children for the day, they're regulated separately. This is over 15 children, you know, a drop off, a bus picks up, and they're allowed in all residential districts, but ironically, they're not clearly allowed in the commercial districts. So I think that that has to be looked at, is whether you take it out completely of the residential district, but I certainly think we should enable it in a much simpler way in the business areas of the town. Now, they have to go to the zoning board and...
Get a variance, you know?
And it's so complicated. But I think we also have to look at, is that a use that, in many of our residential areas, should be there? I'm not talking about the home-run childcare that's regulated by the Department of Health and Social Services, but these are the actual commercial schools.
Yeah. But you can see how this all came about, because I think our zoning is allowed, daycare centers are residential forever, because that was the thought, that would be just a small little daycare. But as it became a business, and a big business, and then you had big facilities come in, well, then, all of a sudden, they're not really appropriate for a residential area, they really should be in a commercial zone. So I agree with you, I think that's something that needed to be done, so.
Are we going to look at also the Echo cottages on an acre and without a variance?
We'll have to take a look at special permits, and if there would be...
The CBA just went through a rather...
They did, they did.
Both sides had excellent points, and...
Yeah. Yeah, we'll take a look at that one, too, so. All right, so we have the list, we have the attorney, and you know when he's here.
Make our appointments, but then...
Make your appointments.
Well, and I'd like to have the planner with me, because she can give you more of the...
Yeah, we'll have a planner with you, too.
She'll give you a lot more ideas about the aesthetics of it than...
So, and so we'll be putting this on for the October agenda.
Do you want to make a special day that she would be here, or...
Sure, we can set that up.
Well, I think what we do, why don't we do this? Take a look at the laws, and we'll, and send me, Regina, an email. We'll make sure Michelle is here today, so we can have a couple of people sit down and just kick it around, talk about the concerns and ideas about this, and I think we can do that over the next few weeks. I think that'd be good. You know, we don't have to prove all of them. You know, we'll pick ones that we feel comfortable with, and we'll see how it goes. We do, there are some changes definitely need to be made, so. Anything else? Any other questions for the attorney? The engineer got off late tonight. I don't know how that happened. Do we have any, no engineering questions?
Make us some.
All right, well, with that, I think we're all done with tonight's workshop. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. The town board meeting, I believe, is September...
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, and we'll be having the public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant application.